Hey, and welcome to our first ever episode of Council Talk with. My name's Brian Dominique and I am the Communications Manager with Pierce County Council here in Pierce County, Washington. On this podcast, we explore all the reasons local government is exciting and specifically why local government is exciting in Pierce County. On today's episode, I'm speaking with Ryan Mello. He's the 2023 Chair of the Pierce County Council. And we're talking about a significant piece of legislation that the County Council recently passed called the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act. Now, there's a lot of components to this legislation that we get into in our conversation, but at its core, it establishes a revenue stream to address affordable housing needs and related services. Two of the groups we talk about in terms of related services are domestic violence survivors and veterans, but there's a lot more groups out there than just that. And not everyone within those groups would, you know, need some kind of related service, you know, either short term or long term. But those are used as examples of, you know, how related services are used and, you know, the types of funding that would go to that. Anyways, without further ado, here's my conversation with Ryan Mello. I hope you enjoy and you learn a lot. Thanks. So thanks for being here with me, Chair Mello.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I'm excited to talk about this topic and it was, you know, a big lift for the council to get to this point. So it's exciting to talk about it. So I think my first question, and probably that of most of our listeners is what is this revenue stream the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act establishes?
So the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act, it really was a labor of love, tremendous lift by this council and really proud that we got a bipartisan majority to pass the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act. In fact, it required a bipartisan majority to get it done. We were able to pass a revenue stream that is dedicated to permanent affordability. And it's a permanent dedicated revenue source. So it's really exciting. It's going to generate $20 million a year and that's going to be leveraged at least fivefold. Our experience tells us that. What it is, is a simple one tenth of 1% sales tax. So that's a penny on a $10 purchase or a dime on a $100 purchase. Sales tax. Certain things are exempt, of course, things like food and medicine and some hygiene products. But it's a way for all of us across the economy to do a very small but hugely impactful part to helping build and preserve permanent affordable housing in Pierce County.
That's great. And I think the second part of that question is this, this act was dedicated to someone named Marine Howard. Who is Marine Howard?
Yeah, Marine Howard is an amazing woman. Our community unfortunately lost her to cancer earlier this year, the beginning of 2023. And so, so honored that we could name this act in her memory. Marine for several decades has been one of the foremost thought leaders and advocates for folks who are living unhoused and folks living on the edge. You would see her in countless community meetings, council meetings of various legislative bodies in Tacoma and Pierce County, just providing a very clear eyed voice for people who are houseless and living on the edge. So I got to work with Marine on so many different initiatives over the years, advising policymakers, pushing policymakers to do the right thing. She's been pushing the county for some time, ever since this local revenue option passed the legislature, she's been pushing the county for some time, helping us really see the power of it and how it can be leveraged, how it can be a really major part of the solution of building and preserving affordable housing.
Yeah, it sounds like an amazing woman. I never had a chance to cross paths with her, but when I heard her name, I knew, I knew she had to be somewhat important to have something like this, you know, named in her honor, so.
Yeah, you're starting to see some other affordable housing developers name housing development projects after her. She's received numerous statewide awards for her longtime advocacy and leadership in this space. She's inspired so many to stay focused for those who often don't have a voice in, in the political system.
So you mentioned the revenue stream and, you know, the money it's going to generate and, you know, how you're going to be using that. So, you know, can you get into the specifics of how does the council plan to, to use the revenue generated from this one tenth of 1% sales tax to address affordable housing?
Yeah, so the, the council will be leaning on expert panels to vet development projects, affordable housing development projects and, and the services that we invest in. So very grateful ahead of time to the many volunteer experts who will be advising council on that. But we've, you know, we're lucky that we already have two plans that council has approved. So we've done the planning, right? We, we have a, what we call a comprehensive plan to end homelessness that has really detailed strategies about how to address homelessness, right? Make homelessness brief, rare and a one-time incident for folks who fall into homelessness. We also have an adopted housing action strategy that tells us that one third of our households in Pierce County are cost burden, meaning they pay more than a third or more of their monthly income on their housing and utilities. And so we know that we need to build 137,000 new units of housing in Pierce County by 2044. Our housing action strategy tells that. So we have adopted plans. We've done the planning. What we need, what we clearly need are resources, especially to get at building housing at the lower income levels, because the private market is not going to solve for that. So what we're going to do, again, in leaning on expert panels to advise us on the best use of funds, again, in, in relationship to these already adopted plans, we've said that these dollars, about, about 30% of the funds will be dedicated to folks who live at an income band of zero to 30% area median income. That's really, really low income. These are folks who are homeless or virtually homeless or just living on social security income, as an example, or disabled disability income. So 30% of the dollars will be dedicated to building housing for that population. 50% will be dedicated to folks who are making about half of our areas median income. The area median income in Pierce County for a family of four is about $80,000. So a family making about half of that, right? And, and those are, those are folks who get up to work, they go to work every day, but they don't make enough to live in Pierce County. So that's, that's about half of the revenue dedicated to that population, building housing for folks at that income band to afford a place to live. And then about 20%, the remaining 20% of the dollars will be for supports to help people stay housed. And I'm sure we can talk a little bit more about that, but that's how we're going to divvy up the, the dollars broadly. We envision notice of funding availabilities, a way to get out the, the money out the door in a competitive fashion. So we'll, we'll say to the, the world, who has projects for us to fund? And, you know, through the course of the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act, we've heard from dozens of developers, nonprofit developers, nonprofit agencies, others who are eager to respond to this and bring a solution to be funded.
Yeah, just in, just in my short time with, with the council, you know, I joined the team in December. This was one of the first things that was being considered to got moved to continuance. But I remember the house being packed with people talking in support of this. And then again, when the council adopted it, so it seems like there's a lot of support out there and a lot of need.
Lots of, lots of support. We've, we've built a really broad, strong coalition, everyone from the Chamber of Commerce and some of our major employers like MultiCare and Coordinated Care, school districts. So many major employers who are enthusiastically support, they know the need, they, they know that, you know, our economy hurts when our workforce can't afford to live here. And when folks are living on the street or living on the edge, to nonprofit housing developers who have been, right, screaming from the rooftops for some time that we need dedicated resources for this. So the really broad, diverse coalition who's enthusiastically supportive of this.
No, it's great. So there's another part of the, of the state legislation that, you know, allowed the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act to come into fruition, and that's affordable housing and then related services. Can you talk a little bit, I think you were kind of getting it toward, toward the end of the last question, but can you talk a little bit about what, what those are? What are related services when it comes to affordable housing?
Yes, related services are often things like behavioral health supports or job training supports. These are kind of, you know, some, some folks in order to stay stably housed, need some support to figure out how to pay their portion of rent on time or be able to live functionally and, and be able to go to work, have their income or, or stay safe, stay safe and stable. So we, some folks hear the term permanent supportive housing and we envision some permanent supportive housing being invested in with, with this new tax revenue. The, the support part of permanent supportive housing are, are these things like behavioral health supports, substance use disorder support, again, could be some job training, workforce support. Sometimes people are not able to live fully independently without support. That's just, that's just a fact. And we, they, they need some support in order to be stabilized. And so these dollars will be able to be invested for that population.
Are there specific groups, you know, I wouldn't, what comes to my mind is, you know, Pierce County is home to Joint Base Lewis McCord, large military population here. A lot of people exit the military, you know, stay in the community, become veterans. Veterans can be one of those populations just from the things they've experienced that, you know, they can find themselves and, you know, that bracket of, you know, they're low on the AMI or, you know, they've even like, you know, hit the point of homelessness, have fallen into substance abuse. Does it target populations like that?
It, it does. That's, that's a really good example of housing related services. So a veteran who might be experiencing PTSD and other trauma in order to, you know, they need that trauma treated in a holistic way, in order to be stabilized and have stable housing. So these could be dollars to support our veteran population experiencing trauma. Another good example would be, you know, folks fleeing domestic violence. So supports, domestic violence supports to keep people safe, to get them out of harm's way and to stabilize their life, help them find their new life. Those are related services examples. So related services shows up in lots of different ways depending on the situation, right? There are so many different reasons why people find themselves on the edge or virtually or literally homeless. And getting at those issues that they get out of that, that cycle of homelessness or living on the edge is what we're trying to get at with funding these housing related services.
Yeah. You know, you mentioned domestic violence and something came to my mind. I know the, I know the council's lifted up this issue before through proclamations and stuff, but a lot of times when people are, you know, fleeing domestic violence, you know, they're fleeing for their lives as they're leaving with nothing. So I think, you know, having related services for that group would be really important.
Yeah, right, that, yeah, that population, we're lucky that we have some providers in town who provide the casework services to everything from how, how to help them find a new home, safe place for their kids to go to school, stay safe, work with their protection orders and their legal case, but also just their, their family and then support their, their kids out of that trauma of fleeing a very violent situation. Those are all things that need to get dealt with if we're going to stop domestic violence, if we're going to stop the cycle of poverty and stop the cycle of homelessness.
Yeah. So, you know, we've been, we've been talking a little bit about homelessness and it's how it relates to affordable housing. And when I was researching, you know, some of the questions that's going to ask for this episode, I found the county's comprehensive plan to end homelessness. And I know that affordable housing and homelessness are separate issues, but they're inextricably, they're inextricably linked. And that plan estimates that the county needs to spend an additional $117 million a year to fully fund the homeless crisis response system in the next five years. And that's on top of the roughly $40 million a year the county's already spending now. Can the revenue from the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act be used to address houselessness?
Yeah, it, it can and it will. So like I mentioned earlier, you know, about 30% of the dollars will be focused on folks who make zero to 30% AMI. That's a lot of our homeless population. And, and we know that homelessness is a housing problem. So the, the more permanent affordable housing we build, the, the more we will be able to get at the long-term impact of housing. We know the number one reason why people find themselves homeless in Tacoma Pierce County. The number one reason is because of the lack of affordable housing. That is the number one reason, people not being able to afford housing. It's not drugs and alcohol, it's not mental health. Those are contributing factors sometimes for some people. The number one reason why people find themselves homeless in Tacoma Pierce County is because of the lack of affordable housing. So absolutely, this is going to help us get at this real crisis we have, this really of visible homelessness. There's a lot of invisible homelessness, so it's going to get at visible and invisible homelessness and it's going to get at our availability of people being able to afford a place to live.
Yeah, that's interesting because I think a lot of times when people think about homelessness, the thing that comes to mind is substance abuse, mental health issues, but in, you know, and when I'm hearing you talk, I'm thinking like, there's people that are, you know, homeless in our, you know, county right now that probably have jobs. They go to work every day and they just, you know, maybe they're living out of their car or something.
The, the majority of folks wake up every day, have, have an income, go to work, take their kids to school, whether they're what we traditionally think of as homeless or in a homeless shelter or living on the street, living in their car, couch surfing. None of these are good situations for their kids to learn and live in or themselves, certainly. So we, we see some visible signs of folks experiencing homelessness who, you know, they, they might be talking to themselves or experiencing mental health disorder or masking their, their pain and their, their trauma with alcohol or substances. Absolutely, we see that. You know, the data tells us that, that, that can be a whole podcast episode in and of itself, right? But this is such a complex and serious issue. We know, we know that folks mask their, their trauma through substance abuse when they're living on their, on the street. But folks who are living on the street of visible homelessness, which drives so many people to action, is just a fraction, just a fraction of those who are really experiencing homelessness in our society. There's, there's a lot to unpack here, a lot for the public to understand about the true causes of homelessness.
Yeah, it sounds like it. So, you know, you sound like you have a lot of passion about, about this issue. So what are you most excited about with the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act?
I'm really excited that we're actually tackling housing with, with, and housing and homelessness with housing solutions, that we're going to be dedicating these dollars to the things that we know matter, which is building workforce housing and getting at housing from everywhere, you know, between 60% area median income and, and lower and really investing in the building of housing, the preservation of existing affordable housing and meeting people where they're at and, and helping deal with their issues that they can be, be more stable. So we've never had a dedicate, a locally dedicated revenue source for this. The other thing I'm really excited about is we know through our recent American Rescue Plan Act investments that we're going to be able to leverage these dollars by at least fivefold. So we're going to turn $20 million a year into $100 million a year. We know that by our experience of our American Rescue Plan Act investments and that's really, really exciting. We're going to leverage that with state and federal dollars, private investment, low income housing tax credits that we get from the federal government. All of that, all of those outside resources, we know require local investment. And this is going to be the local investment that's guaranteed, that the development community can rely upon to position us to be more competitive for those dollars. So turning $20 million into at least $100 million every year gets me very, very excited.
Oh yeah, it sounds like it. I think, I think that's a really good point because, you know, when you look at the, when you look at the scale of need, $20 million, you know, doesn't necessarily seem like it's going to be able to address all of that. But when you think about being able to, you know, multiply that, it, you know, it, it brings it into scope that this is.
It's a scalable, yeah, it's a scalable solution. And that, that's why I'm so excited about it.
Yeah. So the adoption of the sales tax, we talked a little bit about this, is authorized by state law and other jurisdictions have passed similar measures. I believe Tacoma, where we're at right now is past that. What do you think is different about the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act in comparison to some of the other measures adopted around the state?
You know, there, there's a lot of similarity, which, which is good. In my reading of the other ordinances from other communities, like you mentioned, I believe will be the 10th or 11th county to adopt this. Every county around us has already, King Counties, Nomish County, Kitsap County, Thurston County, all of our surrounding counties have already done this a couple of years ago. Tacoma has several other cities across the state. So we're playing a little bit of catch up here. You know, and when I read their ordinances, this is largely the same. I think we're a little bit more specific about what populations we want to serve, what, what income bands we want to serve. We've stated really clearly which expert volunteer advisory panels we want to get advice from about the best use of the dollars. So that, that's a little different. And, and how we hold ourselves accountable is, is slightly different from other communities. We luckily have something called a performance audit system here in Pierce County government. These are independent auditors to the county who review data and performance metrics and help report out to the community about the performance of, of local government. And we're going, we're going to be leaning on that independent performance audit system and some other mechanisms we put into the bill for transparency and daylighting. What, what specifically are we doing with these dollars? What kind of outcomes are we having? That's a little different, that the specificity of the transparency and the, and the auditing that we've built into our program is different from a few other counties that I've seen.
Wow, that's, yeah, that's, that's good to know. The performance audit system, I'm a little familiar with that, so I think there'll be value added, I hadn't connected those two. You know, we, we spent a little bit of time talking about homelessness and I, I kind of want to revisit that because, you know, for a lot of people, even, even sometimes me, working in government, you know, having an understanding of how some of these issues, you know, work, it can feel like the challenge of affordable housing and, you know, the nexus issue of homelessness is, is out of reach. It's like almost unsolvable. What are some of the council's priorities this year and then looking forward into, into, you know, the future that you think is going to make a real difference?
You know, on the housing front, we have a really aggressive strategy on housing. How do we make permitting easier and quicker? We need the private marketplace to be in true partnership with county government to build more housing and build it quicker. So you're going to see some housing reform bills later this spring to make permitting of housing a little quicker, a little cheaper. So look for that. Look for some other tax incentive programs that incent the private marketplace to build more affordable housing. So that, that's on our near-term work plan as well. So those are some of the things that you're going to see to help the private marketplace do their part to build housing. We're also investing in, in infrastructure, right? So we can lower the cost of doing development by making sure that the sewers are already upgraded and, you know, the roads and the sidewalks and the, the water and the power that the public infrastructure is there. So we're using some of our American Rescue Plan Act dollars to help build out sewer, water, broadband, infrastructure. And we're repositioning some of our other funds to direct road improvements and sidewalk improvements where they're connected to affordable housing projects. So we're trying to align that funding to make affordable housing projects easier to build. So we're aligning on that, on that front. That's, that's all actively happening right now and you're going to see a lot of progress on that this year. On the, in, in the homelessness space, connected but different, there's going to be a big conversation this year about regional governance as it relates to homelessness because Pierce County and Tacoma can't do it alone. We need to bring together, right, we, we need to bring together the other communities to do their part and to come together and to be more efficient in the, in the delivery of the system, right? We know homelessness is not a Tacoma problem and not a urban Pierce County problem. We know for a fact through data that people experience homelessness from every single zip code in Pierce County. It's not an urban problem. This is a universal issue and we need everybody to do their part. So there'll be big conversation this year around regional governance, regional authority, around how we resource this system and we, we provide resources throughout the county so that if you find yourself homeless, you can, you can access services in your support network, close to your friends and family. Because we know people do better and they get back to stability when they are in their own element, closer to their, their friend and family network. So it's really important that we distribute services throughout the county and that's what we're really looking to do to, through our efforts of thinking about regionalizing this whole effort and not concentrating all of these services in downtown Tacoma.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. As you were talking, I was thinking about, you know, we've been talking about how affordable housing and homelessness are linked. And, you know, I'm a visual person, so I was just imagining like, like those, there's these, you know, baby thing, like I think they're called mobiles that's laid out, that sit over cribs and like every piece of it's different, but they're all connected, you know.
Yeah, that constellation.
Yeah, so they're all, they're all connected in some way. So that's, that's, that's a really interesting perspective.
Yeah, it's a complicated system and, you know, we, we gotta, we, we have, we have more work to do to make, make sure all the pieces are moving in the same direction, that all communities have a say in how we do this and that they have an opportunity to help lead it and fund it, quite frankly.
So that's all the questions I really have and I do want to give you an opportunity, like is there anything you think people out there should, you know, know about the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act, affordable housing in general, homelessness or any other issue that you really want to lift up?
Hey, you know, the, the one issue that I think is so important for all of us to keep in mind is when we do this work to help build housing for folks, especially for folks who make, you know, $50,000, $60,000 a year and less, like, again, these are people who work, many of these folks work for a living, they have, they have to work every day. When we solve for that income band, we are helping everybody, right? Because folks who are making more than that are also having a hard time finding an affordable place in there. Affordable, affordability is relative to, to your income. But when we keep squeezing people about what, what they can afford to buy or afford to rent, then, you know, all of us throughout the economy have a really big, a really big problem. So when, when we solve for lower and moderate income housing stability, we're really solving for much, much more of the income band.
Oh wow. You know, I just want to thank you for your time and your leadership, not only on, on this issue, but, you know, your representation of Pierce County as a whole. So thank you so much for taking the time to talk with me about this.
Thanks, we're going to keep at it, it's the most important work we're doing.
Appreciate it. All right, appreciate it. So that was my conversation with Chair Mello on the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act. I hope you learned a lot. If you're interested in learning more about the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act or just the Pierce County Council, head over to our website at piercecountywa, that is P-I-E-R-C-E county W-A dot gov slash council. There you'll be able to find more information about this topic, other legislation, and our in the news section that has our blog, and access to the county legislator, our twice-a-month newsletter that covers everything that the county council is up to. Anyways, we'll see you back here next time and thanks for listening.